I didn't think I'm gonna do that.
Maybe I could do that behind me, I have roses.
Yeah, you need some. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. This is the ten AM session, there is no public testimony during the review session. The first item up is appeals calendar continued hearings, item number twenty-five, twenty nineteen, one ninety-eight, forty dash seventeen, twenty-eighth Avenue, Queens.
Hey. Yes, the last time we heard this case was on August twenty-fifth. So all subsequent submissions are relevant to our reviews, this is so commissioners realize. Make sure they've seen all the submissions. Um, one was on October eighth, October twenty-eighth, November thirteenth, and January thirteenth from both the appellant and DOB. Um, the proposal, the proposal has been revised in terms of the layout of the garage. But the drawings are very unclear as to the relationship between the entrance to the car elevators and the street. So it's not really a site plan that shows you how the cars relate to the street. Um, there is no longer an A O O O site plan with information such as provided for our August review. So it just makes it harder to understand the impact. Um, but really frankly, I find this case very odd. Um, the Department of Buildings who has the awesome, and I mean as in awesome responsibility. Um, and difficult task of reviewing the design and construction methodology of thousands and thousands of buildings and effectively ensuring the safety of the public by approving their construction tells this architect or this owner that the proposed design needs to be amended because it isn't safe. The response to that is years of review and reams of legal arguments about the why the DOB has no authority to consider the safety of the public. Meanwhile, whenever there is a building collapse or a crane collapse or any sort of dangerous condition found at a building, fingers point immediately to DOB, how could they have approved that? One would think that the architect also, and I having been in positions like that where DOB is telling me as an architect, you know, you need to change this because we don't like the safety of the evening, something like that. One would think the architect would be concerned that the design could result in liability suits in the event of an accident and would jump to respond to DOB's criticism with respect to safety concerns. So I have to agree with DOB as I did at the first hearing. For me, it doesn't really matter whether or not the zoning resolution requires reservoir spaces in this particular instance. DOB is charged to ensure the safety of the public, directed a solution that ensured the safety of the public. Whether or not the solution was reservoir spaces or more room at the interior of the building to allow maneuverability between entering cars and the parking spaces and elevators and the street. Um, the amended drawing does what was discussed in part at the August hearing. It moves the elevator back deeper into the building, but as DOB notes, still doesn't allow for the clear passage of cars exiting or entering and forces them outside of the building, which is not permissible under the zoning resolution, which requires parking spaces to be enclosed or screened under sections thirty-two, four twelve, and thirty-two seventeen. Um, the site is across the street from a residence district, so it's affected by screening for borderline sites. There is still no explanation for why this building has to set back from the property line as a larger first floor plate might have cured the whole problem. And I know this is being designed under the alternate setback regulations, I'm not even sure the setbacks as proposed comply with those regulations, they seem to me to be less than the required fifteen feet on a narrow street. Um, and since my belief is that DOB has the authority under the admin code to regulate the safe design of buildings and that code provision is not and should not be before us. I don't believe, we really need to go to whether the preamble in the zoning resolution extends the applicability of the reservoir spaces to this case, since the admin code, which is what DOB is arguing. Since the admin code effectively covers the safety issues and as DOB said, they just want it to be safe. That would allow for a solution with more room in the interior to allow cars to come in quickly off the street. And that's the advantage of ramps, which often function as a sort of automatic reservoir and turntables we saw in a parking garage. Um, for a very busy supermarket area, the use of turntables to access the parking garage. This design is trying to put too much into a small package while holding the floor plate back from possible full uh, lot development, which frankly is pretty odd, given that the design has jagging, uneven, overhanging floor plates on the upper floors, so could accommodate an irregular first floor. Um, there would even also be more room if the entrance to the garage. I'm, I'm muting somebody, I'm getting background noise.
Oh, sorry!
Oh, is that you? Oh, okay, okay. So, so, um. Uh, no, sorry, sorry, there would also be more room if the entrance to the garage were on twenty-eighth Avenue as discussed at the last hearing, since the site is nearly a hundred feet deep in that direction. Then Roy, could you, could you mute yourself, please? Thanks, okay. And, um, and it's, so it's a hundred feet deep in the direction from twenty-eighth Avenue and only seventy-five feet deep in the other direction, which is what they're uh, pursuing in this proposal. And there could also be an exit-only, an entry-only elevator to keep the routes clear. It seems to me still there are design solutions, but they're refused, they're just refusing to pursue them. And finally, the development team could hire an experienced parking garage designer who has worked with success with DOB in satisfying all of their concerns. I think at the last, last hearing, they might have said, somebody might have said, oh, I'm, I'm a parking garage designer. But we regularly see certain consultants who are, more or less, that's what they do. Um, and um, I'm not seeing that that's what's being done here. So, um, Vice Chair Shonda.
Madam Chair, I agree with you. Um, I think, um, the way I see it is when BSA reviews site plans, especially related to parking, we have the benefit of asking for trip gen. Um, part, peak accumulation to help us understand the operational flow of the space and how much queuing area in front will be adequate. Um, these are specific findings and also part of the general uh, guidelines under section seventy-three oh one. However, in reviewing an as-of-right uh, case, DOB, I'm not sure, has privy to such information. But it is, as you pointed, it does use its experience and knowledge um, and expertise of reviewing such cases over the years to determine what is appropriate and what, what, what is not and what may be safe and what may not be safe and what may be contrary to the neighborhood context and the safety and well-being of the neighborhood. So, um, while I do see the plan to be flawed and I see DOB's concern about overspilling of the vehicle onto the sidewalk and side yard, I'm trying to understand as to when and if DOB can require such as, as a project to meet the requirements that would be applicable through, let's say, the special permits of ZR seventy-three forty-eight or thirty-six thirteen. I'm, I'm just trying to kind of see, does DOB have some tools and trigger points? And that, that DOB can kind of help us explain, I'm, I've, um, just for my understanding. Um, I do note that, uh, ZR thirty-six hundred, um, uh, ha- has sections where the Commissioner of Buildings has the ability to exercise its authority to modify the maximum size of an accessory group parking spaces per zoning resolution thirty-six thirteen, where the Commission, uh, quote, shall establish appropriate additional regulations with respect to the design of such facility to minimize adverse effects on the character of the surrounding area, such as requirements for shielding for floodlighting. I'm also assuming that shielding of floodlighting is an example of many of the design standards DOB can and has applied over the years. Similarly, in ZR thirty-six twenty-one, thirty-six twenty-four, thirty-six fifty-three, Commissioner of Building has the ability to waive parking where there is no way to arrange spaces with access to the street to confirm to the width of the curb cut. In such instances, the Commissioner is applying the general tenant of ZR thirty-six oh one, protecting the health and safety and the welfare in making that determination. So while we can accept Commissioner's rule to waive parking, we should also be, uh, the, 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 the text, while may not be explicit, it does allow the Commissioner to use thirty-six oh one to, to waive a parking. At the same time, also require a parking design to be better laid out using section thirty-six oh one as a guideline. So it works both ways. We, we are hearing the argument only from one part of it. And we need to be aware that the Commissioner has exercised this, uh, this regulation for both situations. So this leads me to believe that DOB has the authority to review the as-of-right, uh, parking space uh, in this case and ensure that the project will function in a manner that will protect the health, safety, and the general welfare. Um, I also want to point out that the appellant pointed out, uh, CPC report N zero seven oh five oh nine Z R Y, um, zoning resolution thirty-seven ninety-one falls under chapter seven, which is Special Urban Design Regulation. The text amendment was in keeping with the sustainability goal of Plan NYC twenty thirteen. It's, it was primarily establishing landscaping drainage regulation in addition to maneuver, maneuverability for open parking facilities. So I'm not sure that's the right one to use to make the argument.
What's the PPC number again, the report number?
N zero seven zero five zero nine Z R Y. This was specifically, um, with regards to, um, uh, it was part of the N, Plan NYC twenty-thirties, uh, but the, to bring in sustainability aspects into the designs of open parking lots.
Ah, uh-huh.
Where it specifies the maneuverability and other things.
Right. So that's where some of those diagrams show up.
Right, exactly, exactly, right, exactly.
Okay. Anything else? Is that it?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Ali Brown.
Um, I didn't find the appellant's zoning resolution argument to actually, well, I mean, sorry, let me start again. I didn't find DOB's response to the appellant's zoning resolution arguments to be on point here because I really think that the language is clear that ZR seventy-four dash five one two kicks in with a hundred and fifty-one cars or more to require ten reservoir spaces. And so if you're under a hundred and fifty-one, I don't think that DOB can employ the same statute and apply it to smaller garages. However, I do agree with you that the Administrative Code twenty-eight one oh three eight is a catch-all that provides DOB with the power to critique all projects with safety in mind. And so if they're saying that they do not consider this safe because the insufficient reservoir spaces result in the cars backing into the street, which is not safe, then they have the power to deny this project. So I would agree they have the power based on the Administrative Code, but I'm not so sure about the zoning resolution.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, I'll try to not to be repetitive. Uh, point one, I do believe that DOB has the authority to, uh, like, make decisions on, on, uh, issues like that based on their concerns regarding publics here. Uh, this is number one. Uh, DOB mentioned that the Administrative Codes give them the authority to do so. I would like them to articulate on this, uh, somehow. And, and in addition to that, uh, they, they mentioned something about uh, Article three, chapter six of the zoning resolution. For me, this is kind of an umbrella regulation. If they can, uh, give us more details on, on whatever authority this, uh, part of the zoning resolution, give them, I believe we have a done deal here. So I'm, I'm waiting for DOB to, like, explain more about Article three, chapter six. This is number one. And in addition to that, the Administrative Codes, which I, I believe that it applies to all the projects within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that you saw their last submission because there was a DOB submission that essentially says, which is what, um, Commissioner Shonda was referring to, essentially says that the preamble of whatever section that is, thirty-six, um, which is the one that controls the hundred fifty space parking lot, it's the preamble of basically thirty-six oh one, gives them the general authority, that, that's what, what they're arguing. And then they also cite two section, specific sections in the admin code. Um, at, which, uh, gives them the general authority. And the appellant says, no, it doesn't, it only gives you the authority when the zoning resolution is silent. But here, the zoning resolution isn't silent. That, that's the argument.
That's, that's what I need clarifications on, yes. That's what I need DOB to fill in this piece.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I believe you're talking about the Gen one thirteen DOB submission.
I think so, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Shiveta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I believe the preamble does, uh, give the, um, give us insight into what spirit the, the sections are supposed to be read in. I believe the Administrative Code, uh, certainly gives the DOB authority to safe harbor, uh, the citizens of, of the city. Now, is DOB, the only question would then be, is DOB acting arbitrarily? I don't believe DOB is acting arbitrarily. I don't believe that the section of the Administrative Code is in violation of Fourteenth Amendment either. I believe there's, uh, DOB cited sufficient case law that supports that notion. Therefore, uh, well, I think it's clear that DOB has the inherent, uh, authority, both, uh, both, uh, by, by legislation and in spirit of the ramble to, to safe harbor its citizens and it's acting, uh, in, in a way that is not, is, is acting in a way that is in concert with its obligations.
Thank you. I, I think, um, actually, the concept of spirit of the preamble is, is good, a good one because I'm concerned about the idea of a preamble, which we've talked about in other cases, giving actual authority. A preamble basically is the legislative intent, but it's not the legislation. So the, so I'm concerned that we don't expand, uh, because that would be a major kind of event, that we don't expand what the functions of preambles are. They're to give us an idea of what city planning and the city council were after when they enacted the, the legislation, which is in the specific sections. Um, so to follow the spirit of the section, uh, or of the, of, yeah, of the general section is a different thing than following the authority and then saying that it's an authority granted. It's more like trying to be consistent with what the general urban city planning thinking is. Is, is my feeling about it. Okay.
I appreciate that, Chair. I also, you know, it's, 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 in several cases, it's, there's a, a great history of the idea that, um, when, when, that this, that the law could not be written in a way that its interpretation would, would create a safe and dangerous situation for, for a citizen. And that's mostly what, uh, how that preamble is written and why it's written in that way. Um, and interpretation, uh, that, that, that can create a dangerous situation, the type of situation that the Department of Building is trying to avoid, I, I don't think would be, uh, an appropriate interpretation. I think that's what that preamble is trying to do.
Makes sense. Thank you. Anybody else? Anything else? Okay, let's go. Um, we can do the next one.
Item number twenty-six, twenty nineteen, two seventy-six A, fifteen Stewart Lane, Queens.
Um, we last heard this in October, October nineteen. Fire Department issued a conditional letter of no objection, which should become, um, a condition in our resolution. But the plans were revised to reflect those conditions, um, except that I don't see no standing signs on the plans in front of the premises or along Stewart Lane. Um, Fire Department was also, so there's a question for Fire Department. They were also concerned about the general maintenance of Stewart Lane. And, and I don't know whether Fire Department worked anything out with that issue, so I'd like them to give testimony on this case. Um, to my knowledge, there's no HOA or other agreement for the rest of the residents on Stewart Lane. So what is the method that we should hear from the applicant? What's, sort of, what's the deal? How does anybody know to maintain Stewart Lane? Um, um, we were provided with a nineteen twenty-one easement, which is what we asked for, for a right-of-way to allow access along Stewart Lane because it's privately owned. Um, but it has, it describes meets and bounds. The survey does not show the meets and bounds of the easement, so it needs to be updated to show the meets and bounds of the easement. Um, and to refer to it on the survey. So normally a survey will say the reel and page number of an easement and the date it was created and, and then describe the, uh, the contours, the meets and bounds of the easement on the survey. Uh, those were my, oh, and the other thing was, we are still waiting for DOT and DEP sign off. Right. Okay, um, Vice Chair Shonda.
Um, now that FDNY has signed off and has made recommendation, which the applicant has agreed to abide by, I really have no additional comments. So I'm satisfied with the application.
Okay, um, Commissioner Ali Brown.
I have no additional comments.
Commissioner Sheta. You're muted. Muted.
Yep, 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 yep. I just want them to, um, update us on their meeting with the DOB, DB, that's all.
Okay. DP, okay, and Commissioner Shiveta.
Uh, same comments as Commissioner, uh, Sheta. I just want to know if we heard from DP or DP had anything to say.
Right.
Item number twenty-seven, tw- twenty twenty twenty-four A thirty-eight, sorry, thirty-eight thirty-five twenty-seven Street, Queens.
Yeah, um. I thought the response was very complete with, um, bubble plans that were keyed properly with explanations. The statement of facts was revised to go through the findings and to state, uh, though without backup, so I'm not sure that that part's okay. The amount of expenditures since the last extension of time was granted. Um, I don't know if we got any follow-up backup on that. Normally, it depends on, maybe that's something that they could provide right away. I, I reached out to the project manager, or actually to Tony, I don't know if you've reached out to them. Um, to see whether we could get like the AIA requisition for payment or something like that. That's usually the easiest way to establish, um, expenditures to date. Um, but it always depends on what kind of relationship they have with the contractor. It sounds like this is a standard client-contractor relationship, um.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that on Friday.
Okay, so is the AIA requisition for payment, which is the, which is, they give banks to, so that the bank releases the next funding. Okay. Um, Commissioner, uh, Shonda.
I'm fine with this application.
Mr. Ali Brown.
Ultimately, I'm fine with the application because the building is completed. But they didn't really address the serious loss in the way that I feel it should have been addressed. They basically said the project cost eight point three million dollars and we haven't recouped the money yet, so it would be lost. But it's serious loss of not being able to pursue this project and having to go with an as-of-right project. And basically, if you had to go with an as-of-right project and you didn't get your CFO, you wouldn't be able to recoup your money either and all would be lost. So it's not really a good answer. It's like, kind of like, let's just put something out there because the building is up and hope that they overlook it. And bottom line is, the building is up and I know that ultimately they would have had to demolish what's there and then build as-of-right, so I'm okay with it for this case. But going forward, to me, they really have to be a little, take more care in forming their responses.
You know, um, since we see this problem of not being able to describe serious loss very well in a lot of applications, I'm wondering if maybe we could produce a sort of an outline what you have to do to establish serious loss? And that would be something that project managers could give to the applicant. Answer this, answer that, answer this, provide these documents.
Well, actually, I, I actually had a matrix that we used to use. The Deputy Director, Tony and I, used to use and give to applicants. And it was very, very clear. It was like, and you put at the top as-of-right versus, you know, previous zoning or previous zoning, current zoning. And then you list FAR, number of units, you know, price per unit, income per unit, and show the difference between an as-of-right project and, um, the project that was based on the previous zoning. And that difference between each one is part, that forms part of your serious loss finding.
Ah.
And then you go through, then you could just state a narrative at the bottom that says, also because of the different yard requirements and whatever, I would have to demolish half of my foundation and rebuild it. The foundation cost me, you know, four hundred thousand to build, I would lose two hundred thousand of it because I'd have to knock it off or demolish it and rebuild. So it, it's pretty straightforward, but it just seems like because there, there was a period of time when we stopped getting these applications because rezonings kind of came to a halt, the downzonings, people are a little rusty.
Mm-hmm.
But we used to, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, we used to issue this basically to people.
Yeah, I'll look for, I think I just recently used it. I'll, I'll check it and show it to you.
Right, yeah.
I'll find it and show it to you, you're right. If you could go back and like resurrect it, at least we'll have it for all the project managers. It could sit in a very clear location. Now things are organized in a way where all the project managers can have access to resources. So that, that way they could send it immediately to the applicant, but you're right, we don't see these that often anymore.
Yes.
So.
Will do.
Okay. What we might be seeing is the slowdowns like stalled sites as a result of this whole economic collapse here. Um, and, and some rezonings because they didn't get their CISO in time. We might see some of that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sheta.
Nothing further from me, Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Shiveta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, you know, paraphrasing what Commissioner Ali Brown said, practically speaking, we know there'll be serious loss. Uh, I wish they would detail it better, uh, and, and moving forward, we should have, uh, a better explanation and detail of it. But, um, I think it's clear and, uh, I'm willing to, uh, move on this now with the understanding that we will have better, uh, submissions in the future.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Tony, thank you.
Zoning calendar, new, am I muted? No. Zoning calendar, new cases, item number twenty-eight, twenty twenty sixty-two BZ, ninety West two hundred twenty-fifth Street, Manhattan.
Okay, uh, this is legalization. Um, we have proof of service of initial application to officials. Added notice of hearing to officials and neighbors. The Community Board recommends approval. We have, um, DOI sign-off and Fire Department Letter of No Objection. We have interior photos. Um, this is essentially a reinstatement of a special permit that expired in two thousand and seventeen for the same use that opened in two thousand and seven. So it's kind of like continuation of an existing special permit. With respect to the acoustical separation, it looks like based on the information provided that there is only rubber flooring and no ceiling or wall treatment, but that's not consistent with the photographs that show an acoustical hung ceiling and, um, gypsum board walls. So, um, they need to provide details of all the acoustical treatments on the drawings and key those details to the plans. Um, this use is, is over and adjacent to other retail and contains vibration-causing equipment such as treadmills and cycles. So, um, so that it is actually a concern potentially of impact on neighbors, um, though not residential. Uh, but also the, a set of complete drawings needs to be submitted, not like a spot. You know, I, I noticed that they were submitting a couple of drawings to correct, um, project manager comments and then they didn't submit the complete set. So it has to be a complete set that's submitted when they resubmit the drawings in response. Those were my comments. Um, Vice Chair Shonda.
Um, I have no additional comments.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
I have no comments.
Okay, Mr. Sheta.
Nothing further from me, thank you.
Commissioner Shiveta.
Uh, nothing further to add, Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-nine.
Item number twenty nine, twenty eighteen, one seventy three BZ, one twenty eight Beach, Ninth Street, Queens. We have proof of service of initial application to officials and have notice of hearing to officials and neighbors. Community board recommends disapproval with one abstention citing inadequate parking and traffic issues. This is a variance application and we start with the A finding, which starts with uniqueness. I didn't find a uniqueness study in the materials. This is a waterfront lot among thousands of waterfront lots. So I'd like to understand what makes this one different from the others. I'm surprised to not see the findings supported by backup studies that are referred to in the statement of facts. There are only boring logs, sort of like little bits of boring logs submitted. And foundation plans submitted without explanation or conclusion. No comparisons to other sites in the area, really nothing. It's a very incomplete application. This site is only three blocks away from the site of another variance application. That this board either denied or was withdrawn prior to our decision. I think they withdrew. That application submitted boring data from the site itself and adjoining development. So there's actually quite a lot of information. Nearby to rely on if they're arguing that the site is different in some way from other sites that are recently developed. So I have to say this application is incomplete and received a dismissal warning later, letter in September twenty twenty. After like many of the applications we're hearing in the last two days, in these two days. It sat at this agency for two years. The board has nothing upon which to base its analysis. But because may, if we were to go forward with this, I just have random questions as I'm reviewing the materials. The site is in an AE eleven flood zone. So DOB has to review the drawings for appendix G compliance. We do not review that. I'd like to know why the as of right is not developed to the full as of right residential floor area of two point four three. And since the adjoining property has ambulatory care. Why not take advantage of the additional community facility floor area option to build more onsite as of right? They need to explain that. And demonstrate it. Why can't the required parking be provided onsite? If the hardship complained of is lot coverage, then why is fifty four percent? Why is there a fifty four percent increase in residential floor area requested among the relief? Wouldn't the relief more appropriately be yard waivers or height? Yard waivers may not be possible because of DEP regulations or DEC regulations. But but height might be the waiver that's appropriate, but why floor area? They need to show lot coverage diagrams and calculations. Including locations and minimum dimensions of all required yards. Citing to the applicable section of the zoning resolution for each one. It doesn't appear that the building as drawn takes full advantage of allowable lot coverage. But that's me kind of guessing because the drawings are so incomplete. The developable portion of the site measures a hundred eight by approximately a hundred twenty feet. Or approximately thirteen thousand square feet. And has the advantage of a much larger nearly twenty thousand square foot lot area from which it benefits for additional floor area. So I'd ask, it's, you know, the size of the site, a hundred eight by a hundred twenty is a nice sized site for development. Larger than most sites and and it sort of has this floor area bonus of the twenty thousand square feet. From the additional portion of the lot. So doesn't that sort of put the lot in a favorable position? And with respect to floor area. And there was, there's an adjoining interior lot that was developed as of right in two thousand seven to two thousand nine. Which has two floors of ambulatory care and six floors of residential with forty six units. And provides thirty two parking spaces onsite. As far as I could tell, that was done as of right and it's right adjacent. I have trouble believing that the site has different subterranean conditions. It's right next door. So how is that this site more disadvantaged than that site? Is, is, I'm curious also if the statement of facts is inconsistent in the scope of the ask. They, I think it is, it says three point nine seven or three point seven five FAR. I'm not really sure which is the ask. The adage is that higher in the building, the units are located, the better the rental sales values. Hence, in this case, a smaller floor plate is an advantage if it creates a taller building. That should be reflected in the income and I'm not sure that it was. We often see applicants going for tall skinny buildings, especially these days where our four thousand. Square foot floor plates considered, you know, the way now. Sort of back in the day, people wouldn't build buildings with such small floor plates. Now it's considered an advantage. Drawings are very simplistic and unclear and don't look at all like the rendering. There was a rendering provided. So they need to provide detailed site plan to show exactly what the parameters of the various regulators are. And compliance with all waterfront access and frontage requirements. So various regulators as in DEC. Waterfront zoning regulations, W R P and so on, waterfront access. They need to provide copies of the regulations that are cited that restrict lot coverage as claimed to twenty or twenty five percent. They're saying DEC is restricting lot coverage to that, but I don't know based on lot. They need to provide title wetland maps. The survey does not show this is a title wetland or adjacent area. And when I go to DEC map data, which is a, an interactive site. It does not appear to include the development portion of the site as a wetland area or an adjacent area. So I'd like to know how did the DEC regulations interface also with section sixty two dash three forty one C. Floor area coverage regulations. So they're claiming, though I don't know based on what, that the development portion of the lot. Cannot be developed, cannot be developed fully somehow with the full lot coverage in that area or something. I I just don't really understand. And there's also sixty two dash three forty one C. Which requires a certain minimum amount of floor area located on the first floor. I think to to restrict the amount of parking that's put on the first floor. So so that it's kind of in opposition to like the standard Miami. Version where you see five decks of parking and then the units are above that. I think it's trying to avoid that kind of outcome. They need to show compliance with all DEC requirements for development in and adjacent to a title wetland. Which is six NYCRR six six one. I don't see involvement of a consultant with experience in this area on the project. They need to provide DEC consent to develop in the area. We were freak, we frequently receive such letters with respect to GCL thirty six waivers. So is DEC even involved in this project at all? Is this application premature? I mean, it did sit around for years and maybe the applicant isn't that enthusiastic about pursuing it. To understand applicability of waterfront zoning regs to the lot. The survey must be updated to indicate the location of the bulkhead line and the site plans must indicate that line. And the upland lot as defined in section sixty two ten. They're only showing the high, mean high waterline. And I'm not sure if that's enough to determine what the waterfront zoning regulations, when they click, how they kick in. DEC must agree that the waterfront yard line begins at the mean high waterline. And that waterfront access area, DCP. And that the waterfront access area complies with the waterfront zoning regulations. That's not something that we can do. We really need city planning. Review on that. I also like to understand why the building is L shaped. And why does it hold back thirty feet from the side lot line that is perpendicular with Beach Ninth? When there is only one legally required window facing that way that could be relocated to the rear. So I don't understand why it's being designed as sort of a L shaped courtyard building when there's no windows relying on that L. That couldn't be relocated. And also, why is nearly thirty? Why is there nearly a thirty foot side yard being provided along the lot line that's perpendicular to the water? As this is not considered a rear yard under waterfront regulations, it's a side yard. And so I don't believe that they are required to maintain thirty feet there. Also, does the rear lot line have a rear yard? I'm not sure that it does. Show in compliance, show compliance with the as of right, in the as of right with all the provisions of sixty two dash three forty one. And in particular, sixty two three forty one C one to six, which has to do with. Floor area distribution and other things that I mentioned already. Also, why is, is there a curb cut at the entrance to the lobby? That's so weird. There's no entrance to the parking. At that location, sort of a curb cut and then you're at the lobby. How can the community facility share the same elevators and lobby with the residential portion? That doesn't make any sense. Building elevations are blank on the sides. That's unacceptable. A building is a three D sculpture. It should be treated like a sculpture. It has all of its sides exposed to the, to the public, to the world. They need to show materials on all facades. The project must be of quality design. And as to shadow impacts, is the waterfront access area a sensitive receptor? Because it's going to be casting shadows on the access area. And I just don't know the answer to that. And obviously, there's a lot of open seeker, in fact, everything. And there was a question from Tracy. The EAS uses secret, something called seeker app to calculate trips. She'd like more information on that during the hearing. The applicant should confirm if beta seeker app is accepted by the agencies as a tool to calculate trips. And does the app account for a mix of uses as it found in this project? Okay, so on to Vice Chair Shonda.
Thank you. So adding to the uniqueness finding, the applicant should also provide. A map showing all the waterfront sites and indicate the built conditions, lot coverage, year built, development floor area used. To further its argument of uniqueness. Also should strengthen its argument regarding soil condition as to why only pile foundation is feasible. Is there any data available on the foundation used in the neighboring building? With regards to the financing, the proposed development, i.e. a multi-story structure will not be. While, may not be out of the, out of the built context. Though I'm not convinced that the seventeen story, I'm sorry, I I went to the neighborhood. Though I'm not convinced that the seventh seventeen floor is is appropriate. The applicant should provide a context map to justify the proposed height and build floor area. Provide a streetscape graphics along Beach Ninth Street to determine the build context. With regards to minimal. I think, as I mentioned, I'm not sure in terms of the, of the variance that the applicant is seeking. FAR has, is justified. While I do understand the need for a lot coverage waiver and heightened setback waiver. I think the applicant needs to show a couple of alternatives without any floor area waiver. And probably provide an as of right with. Built to the as of right floor area, maximum as of right floor area and then seek a setback or a built out waiver. And build out the floor area of the residential floor area all the way. Using a floor plate of four thousand nine hundred and ten square feet that they have used on the lower floors. And I think that would also result in bigger, larger unit sizes, which will also fetch better rent returns. And and provide and provide a financial analysis to justify why it would fail. So far, the documents does not walk us through those arguments. It just jumps to the final conclusion. With regards to the offsite parking, the applicant stated in the as of right that it assumed that. Twelve, some of the parking spaces will be provided onsite and some of the parking spaces will be provided offsite. However, when it came to the proposed parking, the applicant is saying while they assumed it in the as of right, in the, in the proposed. That is not being considered because it is not guaranteed. Well, if it's not guaranteed in the proposed, then do not assume it in the as of right. Then build the as of right. Factoring in what is the amount of as of right parking you can provide. If you can only provide ten parking spaces, then. Provide that many number of residential units. Make that argument. Convince us that that's all that can be built onsite. As a pride parking and that limits your ability to build the full residential floor area. I don't think that argument has been made. So you cannot assume one factor in one and then take that factor out in the proposed. You have to carry it through. The entire narrative. So that was, that was my comment. So my comment is also that in the as of pride, they should develop. An as of pride where all of the as of pride parking is provided onsite. And if they are finding an alternate site, then that should be analyzed in the proposed also.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brown.
So I had issues with the uniqueness. I felt that, first of all, if lot coverage was actually an issue. How is this unique compared to all of the other waterfront sites? And I think that just making a statement that this doesn't have the board work and this doesn't have the bulkhead. Doesn't really get me to their justification for why they're having a lot coverage issue. And why it's different from all the other properties that are developed along the waterfront. And if that is the issue, why can't they resolve it with a lot coverage and height waiver? I totally agree with you. Why do they have to then go to almost double the floor area ask? And then same for the other argument that they have that waterfront proximity and bad soil requires deep piles. And that requires extra floor area. Why is this unique? Every site that's built along the water like that is built in bad soil and and requires piles. So how is this a uniqueness issue? So therefore, I'm not very convinced that they have a case at this point. If they manage to prove their uniqueness and we go to financials. I feel, after looking at the financials, I don't have a lot of questions. My main question for the financials is that the construction costs for the as of right. As well as for the proposed, seem like they're kind of high. If you include the soft costs for the as of right, it's four hundred and fifty six dollars a square foot. And if you include the soft costs in the proposed, it goes down to three seventy one a square foot. And I would like to see what Marshall and Swift says about these soft costs. And they're going to argue to me that Marshall and Swift doesn't provide for the waterfront difficulties. But they should still use Marshall and Swift as a guide and then add in the cost for the piles. And then show me that when they get a price per square foot, it doesn't. That whether or not it actually is equal to what they're already quoting, because I think using the cost estimator is distorting the cost. So that's my major, my major issue.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shabetta, I mean Sheta, sorry, Sheta.
That's okay, thank you, Chair. Okay. I I just want to start with saying that I didn't find this site unique at all. From the perspective of subsurface condition. I would say it's favored. If, if we, like you mentioned, Chair. I believe less than a year and a half ago. We looked at a case and we finally did put it to rest in peace. We, we, they withdrew and and that site wasn't that far from, from that location. I I I believe it was Beach Fifth Street, if I recall.
Yes.
And this is Beach Fifth. And this is the subject site.
Right.
If I do recall very well that at Beach Fifth Street, the main argument about the subsurface. Was because of a layer that's called the clay layer. And the clay layer was very observable here. Based on data that were provided by the applicant. And it wasn't that clear here at their site. I believe this was their site.
Yes.
So the data, the clay layer showed up in some borings and some other borings. It didn't. However, the type of foundation for that kind of structure that we're applied, was applied for at that time. Was drill pipes. Drilled, not timber pipe. And even for these buildings, I recall that when we discussed with the applicant engineers and. And we, we like pressured them a little bit. We discovered that these kind of. like pressured them little bit, we discovered that these kind of low-rise buildings were founded on very similar pile foundation system. And again, it was drilled pipes. The kind of files that's been utilized on this application is something called timber pipe. It's wood pipe. And that depth of these pipes is, is limited to probably thirty to sixty feet. Typically, it's thirty to sixty feet. Drill pipes could go to a hundred feet. And I recall that for the fifth beach street, the applicant was claiming that he needs like extremely deep piles because of that clay layer. This clay layer is not present at the subject site. This is item one. Item two, the subsurface conditions appear to like, they, they haven't submitted apology. They gave me some boring logs. And when I looked at him, it's typically beach sand. This is, this is the very typical beach sand that has blow counts all over the place. That could be improved somehow. And, and pile foundation are, are very typical for probably from five story and up. I did build in similar areas, six-story buildings on pile foundation. We couldn't, we couldn't found them on, on shallow foundations because it's simply not possible. And, and they need piles. The blow counts for, for the substrata in, in areas like that seem to be low. The rock is, is probably beyond two hundred, three hundred feet deep. So pile foundations are very common. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure why they are claiming hardship based on subsurface. And the support for that is we need deeper piles. And I don't know what deeper piles. I, I, I know deep piles. The piles they are using here are not even deeper. They are shallower. They could have said, said shallower pipe. That you need piles either way. This is for, even for the as of right. Said eleven, twelve-story building, like I said, from six-story and up, you're gonna need pile foundation. It's a waterfront area. So for, for, for me, it's dead end. Subsurface is done. No uniqueness here. It, it, and, and, and from now and forward, and I believe we have explained this before, I believe the uniqueness when it comes to subsurface is the most tough thing to prove. If you want to prove that you're unique because of the shape lot, you could go to Google Maps and take a look at the lots or like bring up a tax map and take a look at the lot shapes and compare them to yours and you're done. But for subsurface, to prove it to me that you have uniqueness, you have to bring me tons of boring logs for adjacent properties and prove it to us that your lot has like a really different subsurface condition. Which is, I, I, I would say if somebody asked me to like prove that, I would be hesitant to like move forward and take the job. So uniqueness for subsurface here is done. Other than that, I did ask myself when I looked at the site, why, then why the applicant is claiming hardship based on what? And I, I, the only answer is the DEC regulations. And I'm not sure. It isn't DEC regulation like, like the zoning regulation? Can somebody come and claim hardship because of the law? I'm not sure. If, if the answer is yes, then we can look into the claimed hardship based on the DEC regulations. And I, I doubt we should do that. But construction cost was, and I'm, I'm really concerned because I, I believe I spoke about this two years ago. And I, I believe the applicant is a smart here, and I hope he's listening. Two years ago, I praised the applicant for presenting very honest construction cost estimate. Now, I believe his construction cost is mirror that said and talk to others. It's, it's not gonna fly this way. The kind of construction cost I got this time from this smart applicant is very similar to what I get from others, just numbers thrown all over the place. And it's just this tier to reach the conclusion, the conclusion that this project is not feasible. I, I'm not sure about the numbers mentioned by Commissioner Brown, but I, I did take the total construction cost of twenty-five million point six and total area of the building of forty, almost fifty thousand square feet. And I got almost five hundred dollar per square foot. Really? For the as of right? Typical is probably two hundreds. It's, it's lower two hundreds would be the number for that. So this is more than two and a half. And if you want to know how, look at the concrete, look at the, the de-watering cost, look at the shearing cost, look at that. It's the prices. The unit price for the cost items are all over the place. Same thing for the as of right, upper four hundred. So I, I, I'm not sure, guys. Just be realistic here. So like, long story short, is uniqueness for the subsurface, none. It, it's not, it's not gonna fly with that argument. If you want to go to the other route, be my guest. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, the, just a response to your questions like can the law be uniqueness? The, the concept, like if we were to take, you know, one of those skinny triangular lots or even a skinny rectangular lot where there's, where you could build a house on the lot, except the zoning says you need two eight-foot side yards. And the lot's only twenty feet wide, so therefore you could only build a four-foot house. That's the situation where we're waiving that provision of the code to allow that. So the hardship is that it's a narrow lot and the zoning, the law, is preventing reasonable use of the property. Right? In that case, a house use, right? So you could argue that there are times when the law deprives a property owner of their right to use their property. And that's what the, the zoning, what the BSA is for, right? To prevent takings by government. So it arguably, if all the regulations together said that they couldn't build a viable building to realize a reasonable return, then we have a variance case, right? The question is, do they? Because it doesn't necessarily look like it right now. So who knows?
Yeah, but in, in the, like the case you just mentioned, you have a physical condition for the site, which is the anomalous that's together with the zoning law, like giving you a hardship. But for this site, I couldn't, I couldn't see any like physical condition that preventing them. I believe as of right is a decent building.
Yeah. So, so this, the thing is, we've seen in Staten Island, some cases where a very huge portion of the site is a wetland. And the applicant negotiates with the DEC to be allowed to develop on their site, you know? So we've seen ones where DEC moves the, the adjacent area boundary away and says you can build here. But we know that this applicant has not gone to the DEC to say, look, you know, you're imposing too much on where I can build, let me build a little more. We don't have any input from DEC. So it's possible that, for instance, they would relax some of their regulations if the applicant convincingly demonstrated to them that, that they don't have a viable development. And so, you know, that's, that's part of the question. So it's really DEC's regulations that may be the issue, not at all the zoning, not at all the zoning. It's DEC. And DEC has the authority to waive its own regulations or adjust or whatever. So I actually think their complaint is really with the DEC. And until we hear from DEC about how to allow development on the site, probably the application is premature, even though it's been sitting here for three years or something like that. So, thank you. Commissioner Shaveta?
Thank you, Chair. So as Commissioner Sheta said, we had a case that is not too far from this location, but and, and, and while that case went on for a, a couple of hearings, it was ultimately withdrawn. Independently, this case, I, I don't, I didn't see much of an A argument, nor do I believe it'd be able to make a uniqueness argument based on the, what, what, what was stated in the statement of facts. If they wanted to try, I'd be happy to hear it. But starting at not finding an A, I think that, that my review or review should probably stop there. That being said, the, the amount of the variance what they're seeking here, I think, is, is is way outside of the scale of, of, of what their, what their hardship would be. I believe there's several other much more meaningful ways to address whatever hardship they have. That would be more in line with an E finding as opposed to what they're proposing here.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, this concludes the public review session. We will now commence with the public hearing for February twenty-third, ten, twenty twenty-one, ten AM. The first item is appeals calendar, continued hearing items. Item number twenty nineteen, one ninety-eight, forty dash seventeen, twenty-eighth Avenue, Queens.
Steve, can you make me a co-host, please? Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Am I okay to begin?
Yes.
All right. My name is Frank Noriega. I'm here on behalf of Shell Novell. I'm joined by Antonio Di Aronzo, the architect on the project. We listened to the review session. We're here to respond to some of the comments. But first and foremost, I want to talk about this project in the sense that this is an as-of-right development. And the applicant has been denied the ability to utilize this project for close to three, or over three years at this point now based on some unarticulated safety violation. The administrative code that keeps getting cited regarding safety is a broad over a broad regulation that would allow the DLB to make safety rules, but it's specifically when things are not covered. We keep talking about thirty-six oh one and how it generally the text is read in the light of safety. But when we're talking about really what boils down to whether or not these reservoir spaces are required, there are specific conditions when these are required. And this particular parking garage doesn't. And, and DLB hasn't articulated why it's needed. I mean, if this was a ten-car garage, it wouldn't. Twenty-car garage, it wouldn't. But the fact that it's a large garage at a hundred and fifty spaces, they're, they're concerned that it's not safe. But the, the law makes a clear distinct cutoff. Hundred fifty spaces does not require reservoir spaces. And we keep going back to the department with plan changes. And we're not getting response. The most recent one, which we're shocked that we didn't actually get a response to. In fact, we, we first heard about the denial through the BSA submission, even though we, we had requested a meeting with the, the commissioner on this back in October. That the reason it's denied is because it's not an enclosed building, which first off, we don't agree with. But if that's the only issue, let us resolve it. The issue here is whether or not we're required to provide the reservoir spaces to begin with. So the fact that they may be outside of a building is ridiculous. But just to touch on a couple of points that were raised at the, the review session, the city planning report that was cited was cited in reference to the, the initial hearing. It was brought up that there are maneuverability standards and sometimes in certain cases how parking lot garages function. There's aisle widths, parking stalls and whatnot. But the CPSC report specifically notes that it doesn't apply to interior garages. City planning and the council had the opportunity to make rules to cover this kind of situation where there's garages and when you need things. And they chose not to. Similarly, it was part of the original statement of facts. The council was presented with language that would allow this sort of ad hoc review for certain garages, and they chose not to include that language. But again, we're, we're being required to conform to a standard that we don't know what it is. And we're, we're not able to use our property. As I believe the vice chair mentioned, there are discretionary actions like variances and special permits where we have to take into account the impact on the neighbors and whatnot. This is not the case. This is an as-of-right development. We don't look at whatever this is, but the neighbors would have the traffic impact. Again, there are specific rules when these reservoir spaces kick in, and we do not meet that. But I also find initially, before we even get to the administrative code, we look at the charter as far as what the DLB's authority is. That hasn't been responded to. We, we don't believe that the charter actually acknowledges that they can make rules to cover this. And, and that hasn't even been addressed. And we, we think that this is, there are only limited times where the DLB has authority to regulate in certain circumstances like inspections, which the case law that was presented by the DLB concerned elevator inspections, which was challenged in court to see whether or not that was constitutional. That case was regarding a RCNY, a published rule presented by the DLB, which we provided a copy of, which explicitly laid out what the inspections were, what the fines were and whatnot. And that very explicit rule was challenged as to whether or not it was constitutional as how it applied to a single-family homeowner who happened to have an elevator in their home. That's not what we have here. We have a very broad, general, anytime anything's unsafe, we get to say no interpretation of a rule. And, and we don't even know what's unsafe about this rule, or I mean, what, about this layout. And further, as cited originally, DLB's own directives as far as what they're supposed to be reviewing for put the onerous on safety on the architect, which I believe was also raised. The architect is responsible making these things a safe. The only thing that DLB should be reviewing for is whether or not it is legal. And nothing has been provided as to whether or not this is a, a illegal or inappropriate design layout.
Okay. You want to add anything?
I think that's it for now. Antonio, did you want to just add anything about this review period that we've had since October?
Oh, absolutely. I have plenty to say. And I want to thank the all the commissioners and the chair. I have to say, this is it, it is, this is a very bizarre, surprising, unique peculiar situ, peculiar situation. Even though I, I I want to commend the BSA for being far clearer than the DLB. I have to say, some of the things I, I heard today are required that I express a couple of words. To me, as an architect of record, this is a case of DLB gaslighting. Justice counsel Noriega was pointing out. Not only does the DLB have a very broad argument, but this broad, broad argument about lack of safety is, is a moving target. When we filed this project, I, and I'm going to be as succinct as I possibly can, but I, I, I need you to have the full narrative, the background, just to give you the measure of the arbitrary behavior of some of, of the actors here. We filed this project. We cured, cured. We addressed all objections. Examiner says, go to Derek Lee. I personally go to Derek Lee. I would say six, seven times. In the snow, I broke a cellphone of mine in the process. I speak with Derek Lee. Derek Lee tells me, give me reservoir spaces. I tell Derek Lee, Derek, no. I say, Mr. Lee, because he's no friend of mine. You're not entitled to make this request. Nevertheless, I, I will look into this. He asked me, no, he told me, he requested, you know what, put them this way. Put them this way. I give him ten reservoir spaces. And following meeting, the issue is I think it was the the you need to have certain curbs, which were already in the drawings. Just to just to get to the next phase of this narrative, I he tells me, I I I abide, I respond, I accommodate all Mr. Lee's requests. He tells me, okay, file as ZRD one. I file as ZRD one. Sure enough, it gets denied. I tried to get another appointment with Mr. Lee. No appointments are given. I show up at eight o'clock in the morning to just show up there without a meeting, because that's how it works in DLB Queens. Nothing, nothing. So we go to technical affairs. Now we're BSA. Fast forward to two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty. We have a BSA hearing. The chair and Commissioner Shanda provide design suggestions, design advice. We follow said advice. The BSA says, go back to DLB. Find a way to make this work. You know, there are design flaws. You know, obviously, I took issue to the fact that some people said there were design flaws, because if you have license to be an architect and you design a building and you feel you have responded punctually and thoroughly to all mandates of building code and zoning resolutions and also your understanding of what is good and decent design, then, you know, you take issue to a statement like that. We go, we push the, we push the elevators into the building to detriment, to my client's detriment. Now, you want to talk about liability and safeguarding my client's interests. And the full exploitation of what his property, his land, his real estate provides him to 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 gather. So we push the elevator in, elevators in. We further provide again six reservoir spaces fully within the build, the the property line. And mind you, it took us two and a half months. After the BSA hearing in two thousand twenty, the last one before this, it took us almost ten weeks to have a PR eleven simply acknowledged, just to get a meeting. I get a meeting with Antonio Marbit. Antonio Marbit is a fine gentleman. We give him all the drawings prior to the meeting day. He tells me, send me everything. I send him everything. I take two hours, because I didn't even ask the project architect to do it. I do it personally, because this is now close to being like a a milestone case in my career. And so I write the narrative. I explain every single step we've taken. And Mr. Marbit disappears. He tells me, you know, Antonio, give me two weeks. I'm going to give my points to Derek Lee. Obviously, as you would expect, Antonio Marbit disappears. I follow up with him. I say, what happened to this project? He says, oh, it's with technical affairs. I mean, you will teach me. This is not the way it's done. I ask him, why is this project technical affairs? I did not ask you to send it to technical affairs. And everybody went mute, quiet. Now, today, you chair were rapidly, and you were ready to side with DLB, because clearly someone either didn't send you the drawings or didn't tell you the story. Because the so if, just just to get to the matter at hand, if the matter is safety, someone needs to tell me, the architect, to define safety, because to the extent that garages require cars to cross a sidewalk to enter a garage, all garages are to be deemed unsafe. As such, this garage is no different, no different from any other garage. In that, we have a curb cut, we have an underground garage. We are as as Commissioner, Commissioner Utley Brown rightly pointed out, we are, and also Council Noriega, we are fully within everything the letter says, the letter of the law says. So I am, as the architect, let alone the the client, who's actually suffering abuse of power, nothing short of of abuse of power. I am here thinking, okay, so we know that the zoning resolutions are clear. We know that there is a legal argument about charter, about administrative code, and I clearly put myself outside of that dialogue, because I have been providing reservoir spaces. So then, that's why I go back to when I said to you all, this safety issue is a moving target, because someone has decided to hide behind some thin air argument. I cannot get to speak with Commissioner Lee. I cannot get to speak with Antonio Marbit. The the drawings are with technical affairs, not to my, not because I asked for it. Someone, you chair, said, my drawings are insufficient. I take issue with that. If there had been an clarity about the drawings, colleagues would have said, Antonio, you are a bad architect. Give me this drawing, because it's missing. I would have said, you know, sure. Here is the extra drawing you want. With examiner, we have this sort of dialogue all the time. Give me this, give me that. Please add this note, add this detail. Here, people literally disappear. And I know that you know, I have kept quiet during the previous BSA meeting, because, you know, I as a matter of attitude and as a matter of just process preference, anytime we deal with government agencies, we accommodate. Accommodate within a certain a certain range of, you know, interest that basically mitigate everybody's position. In this case, I cannot get to speak with the DLB. DLB has been regularly hiding from me, literally. First of all, it took them ten weeks to even allow me to speak with Antonio Marbit, whose title, nobody knows. Nobody can tell me who Antonio Marbit is. He used to be an Assistant Chief Examiner or someone in a position of supervision. I couldn't even get get him to tell me who he is, because Derek Lee does not want to speak about this project. So when the DLB sends you BSA a letter saying that the drawings are unclear, not only do I take issue, I tell you, this is bad faith. And for me to get to the extent of saying this is bad faith, it's because I cannot get to speak to anybody at DLB to tell me why, after I provided six reservoir spaces, there is a safety issue. Said reservoir spaces are all within the property line. There is a a fully legal building here, designed with safety in mind, designed with decency of design in mind. There is a curb cut. Everything is there. Nobody tells me why this building is unsafe. You chair tell me that I should be concerned about liability. This is what us architects live with on a regular basis, minute, every minute of every day. So believe you me, when I tell you I have liability in mind. So here, just to just to conclude, if someone tells me what this safety moving target is, I will try and comply. The client has already lost close to a thousand square feet of rentable space at the ground floor by virtue of pushing these two elevators in. We provided these reservoir spaces. I'm still told this is not safe. I would have understood if anybody in good faith at the DLB had told me, look, I wanted ten reservoir spaces. You're giving me six. Mind you, there are also two, we're not even counting the two cars in the elevators, so six reservoir spaces. You're giving me six. Maybe instead of getting a hundred and fifty spaces, maybe we can talk about this amount of spaces. And this is why I tell you today, this is not okay. This is at least peculiar. I want to tell you, this is not acceptable. Someone has to make a decision on what is safe. Because otherwise, I am going to show you, I mean, what I have seen in twenty-three and a half years that I moved to New York from Italy. In terms of garages in this town, the things that have been approved, I mean, all of us here this morning would have a totally different conversation. The tone of this conversation would be absolutely different. So respectfully, I say to you all, I don't care about charter. I don't care about administrative code. I, because I, you know, that's for you guys to to have that argument, for Council Noriega to let you to let you, to give you, to offer you a position on legal matters. I tell you, as far as I can tell you, I provided everything I was requested to to provide. Nobody at DLB wants to give me an answer. And I'm not going, for one, I'm not going to stand for it. I know the client is at his last minute or so. So it it it's just not decent behavior. It's not, let alone from a colleague like Derek Lee, let alone from Antonio Marbit. I mean, an examiner gives me an objection. He cannot mention, he cannot cite the letter of the law. Oh, just go speak with Derek Lee. Who is this Derek Lee? I ask you, who is Derek Lee? If not a servant like myself. Okay, I got it.
So
I find that extremely convincing.
All right, just Mr. Aronzo, I sorry, steer on, so sorry. I I really, I I'm an architect. I've been in your place. I feel your pain. I I and now what I'm really understanding is, and I'm hoping that Mr. Zoltan is taking notes on this aspect of it, and that what we're really talking about is your inability, given the DLB's process, to sit down with a decider. And this actually, way back many years ago, I was on the board of the AIA. And the thing that was happening then was that it was taking four years to get a permit to add in addition to a garage in somebody's house in Staten Island. And it was the new Commissioner Lamondry who listened to those complaints and created the hub. So that, oh, no, he created this program called Get It Done Together. And the whole idea of it was that at five PM, people would show, architects would show up with their drawings and sit with all of the deciding agencies, and they would get it done right there at the table that night. And it sounds like what's happening is the DLB's processing has sort of gone backwards in time. And now what's happening is you make those arrangements for those appointments, and it takes forever to get it, and then you only have twenty minutes to cure your via, your objection and so on, and it takes years and years. So I think sort of, not that this is necessarily BSA purview, but the it's almost like an intervention that in some way we need to help facilitate an actual sit down with, maybe we're in the room with you and and one of the tech tech affairs level people, which is actually frankly, the most most relevant of the group, because you'll have technical people who sit there and try to work out the issues. So I think what we're really talking about is a processing problem and and not really a design problem. Because if you could have sat down and they could have said, try moving this here, or these are the issues, you would have gone back to your desk and come back the next day with some modification. And, you know, the client needs to deal with the reality that if you want a hundred and fifty parking spaces in the building, maybe you don't have as much retail. You know, there's a give and take about the project, right? My comment about your drawings is not that the drawings were bad. It's simply that there was an AOO site plan that was you had provided before, and we didn't get a copy of. You may have provided it to your attorney, but we didn't get a copy, so I couldn't see the relationship to the sidewalk, so I had to sort of figure it out myself. I can tell you what I think is probably why DLB objects to the current layout. And that has to do, and and I have to say, we look at a lot of garages here, garages that are not as-of-right. And so we're constantly looking at the relationship between the entry and the exit of the of the many cars and the subject of throughput, how long it takes to get the cars in and get them out, which is why I mentioned ramp and turntable. We had a parking garage in Brooklyn, right across the street from one of the busiest supermarkets in in that, I think it's in Borough Park. And and the issue of throughput so as not to create terrible traffic jams was very important. And in that case, the parking garage designer came up with this rather fantastic, I I think it's used in Japan. It's a turntable where it actually would take the cars into an elevator so fat, like within three seconds or something, a car would enter and it would be in the elevator from the turntable. So there wasn't a concern about buildup on the street, because first there was reservoir and second, there was this turntable. So I think what the concern is here is that it's not clear what you do when you have six cars waiting to get, or let's say, yeah, six cars waiting to get in, and then no way for cars to get out. Right? So the way that it reads, because all your cars in the drawing are facing in, is that everyone lines up inside. There's two cars in the elevator, which is traveling. The six cars are standing there in your building, and no one can leave the elevator. So back up. So 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 that's the concern that I'm reading into DLB's objection. But I agree with you that communications through emails, through legal briefs, all of this is not the way to come up with a design solution. You have to sit at a table, or these days, maybe a virtual table. And like the hub where they had a, you know, you could grab the cursor and move it around and make a little circle and say, can you make this better? That's what actually should be happening with you and a technical affairs person. So I what I would like to suggest is that we figure, we at BSA figure out some sort of an intervention where we set up for you as and as long as it takes conference with a technical affairs high-up decision maker, so not somebody who says, I don't know, I don't have the decision abilities, and and try that out. So I'd like to go, Vice Chair Shanda had her hand up first, and then Commissioner Shabeta.
Thank you. You know, I understand the frustration the that's been cited, and and I hope the DLB can help in resolving that issue. But I just do, I do want to point out one thing, you know, in your discussion, you mentioned that by moving the elevator further away in the the owner lost thousand square feet. When I look at the plan, if you make the first floor all the way to the lot line, you gain your thousand feet and more. So I'm not sure, and and, you know, these are the things that design intents are not very clearly laid out and identified and explained. Maybe that's why a face-to-face discussion would help in understanding it. But, you know, if if that outdoor space is meant for outdoor seating, then separate it out from the driveway, from the thing, provide, nobody would want to sit right by the door where a car is waiting right behind them. Make it very exclusive, that it's an outdoor seating area and not a place where a vehicle can even sneak in from anywhere. I think those are the concerns, and those are very genuine concerns that DLB has raised in its review, because it has seen from various projects where failures have happened, and it has learned from these failures to know how to exercise what is correct, what is not. And so if you're so determined that that eleven-foot space along the building lot line is not for driving, it is only for, it is not even for stacking any vehicles, it is only for outdoor seating for the restaurant that is going to be located on the ground floor, then make it a design clear, very design design determination, so that the DLB is fully convinced that, yes, this is going to be an outdoor seating area. So far, I don't see it. I see a drain. That's the only thing that is separating this this space. I I I mean, if I look at, if I'm a reviewer, I'm looking at this plan, that's how I'm going to read it. And with regards to loss of floor area, the second floors can be hung over, can be, you know, can be extended out onto the lot line. So I'm not fully convinced, but we are not here to design your building. That's not what our job is. But I'm just pointing out some of the flaws in the argument, and I I think that there is, I I understand that, you know, the trigger point of hundred and fifty and above is where the reservoir space requirement is read it. But I don't think DLB is saying you have to provide that hundred and fifty required spaces. It is that some amount of reserve reservoir spaces have to be provided onsite to ensure that there is adequate maneuverability. And so far, the numbers that's been provided and And so far, the numbers that's been provided and way it has been executed in the plan has not convinced them. And unfortunately, I have to say, I'm not convinced based on the number of cases we have reviewed. But like I said, this is not our design to review. It is really for DOB's review, and DOB is exercising its authority that has been granted, as we have stated earlier, appropriately. Thank you.
Okay, I think, you know, part of the issue is this is an alternate setback building. So he can't build within the setback area and still maintain alternate setback. So maybe there's a tower-on-a-base solution. I don't know if there's other solutions, because I didn't review the zoning. But the, but I understand.
It's an R5, it's an R5 district, right?
Uh, is it? I don't know, don't remember.
I say that what you chair and you Commissioner Shonda have just offered is spans beyond what DOB has done in years. So this sort of dialogue has never occurred.
Right. I understand. And you know, what I want to say is also, I remember when dialogue like that would occur, where you would sit for an hour with the commissioner and figure out how to solve the problem at his desk. So obviously, it's not like the good old days. So we are, I am going to try to arrange an intervention because it, this, really, it shouldn't happen like this. And it's completely independent of whether we think the admin code or the zoning resolution applies and all of that. It's trying to get a project moving. Commissioner Shaveta.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Diaranzo, I found your, your testimony honest and compelling. I, if, if the DOB is going to raise a safety concern, they should address that directly with you and find a way that you can resolve it. Them not doing so and just blanketly denying this, there's an argument for some sort of constructive taking. I think that I, I, I am glad to hear that the chair is, is going to facilitate a, a, a meeting so that this, this can be addressed. It sounds like you want to work this out. And the fact that, that, and I, and I wish you did speak at the earlier hearing, because I, that could have been something that we could have addressed immediately. This is, this is a very different picture for me now. And I, and I would, I ask of Department of Buildings and the, the council to, to bring that to, to ensure that there will be a meeting so that by the next hearing, and I, and I ask that we have a sooner, close date on this because I, I do believe the testimony to be true. It's, and it seems entirely plausible, and, and that should be addressed. This is, this has been a long time since those original plans were filed. Something needs to be addressed and it needs to be done soon.
Appreciate it very much.
So I, thank you, Commissioner. So we've done this a little bit in the past. We had an experience with a certificate of occupancy issue where we ordered the DOB to behave in a particular way. I'm wondering whether, and this is something to take up with our council and, and DOB council, but whether we can issue an order to DOB to have these meetings. It's not going to be one meeting. It's an iterative process. So, but, but to have meetings that, like, we set up a schedule. And so let's just say, Mr. Diaranzo responds every once a week or something like that to the comments, because I'm sure he's even, not with CAD drawings, but with sketches, just to get the, get the concept out there. Do you mean like this? And, and even to do, because we're working, I'm assuming that all the hub meetings are now online. They're not in person, right? So you can even be doing the sketches online over your drawings. What if I did this? What if I moved this? And have those meetings set up. And they can't be these 20-minute things because it's not enough time to have a real discussion and understanding that some of it is not going to be citing to code, and some of it will. So for example, I just want to point out that when you responded, not this time, but the time before, by providing outdoor reservoir spaces, what happened was, and I see, we see this a lot in the applications that come here. We, we ask the applicant to make a correction, and they make that correction. But they don't do any further analysis to see whether that correction actually complies with code or zoning or whatever. So what ended up happening was you put those reservoir spaces outside the building. And then you needed, and if you're not as, like, really a zoning expert, a lot of architects rely on others to do that. You really need to have the zoning person and the code person look at, if I do this, am I breaking any zoning regulations or codes? So, because that's the thing. So you might suggest it to DOB at that meeting. How about if I do this? And they're like, yeah, that might work. But then you have to take the responsibility to go away to see that you didn't create another problem. Because actually, that's what happened when you put those spaces outside. Even I was like, wait a minute. Now you have outdoor parking garage, parking lot.
Guess whose idea was that? I'll just, I'll just leave you the riddle. I'll just leave you with the riddle. Guess whose idea that was? Anyway, look.
Right, no, that's, I mean, even they're not thinking of it, right?
But that's the thing, you know, many times architects want to comply with whatever government asks of them, because it's just the easier path. I don't need to tell you this, right?
But you know what? Guess why, after being an architect for a lot of years, I became a lawyer? Exactly that.
That's also the riddle.
Don't sit, sit back and take it. Okay, um, yes, um, commission, let's see, here from Kurt Steinhaus. He's our general counsel, and then from Commissioner Shaveta.
I just wanted to note that we hadn't heard DOB's position yet. But also that in past interpretive appeals, we've seen both appellants and DOB successful at working out design solutions. The one that came to mind for me was the Cabana appeal that was ultimately withdrawn.
Yes, right, that's true. But that was easy. That, the instruction by DOB was take out the cooktop or something. That, that took about four nanoseconds to correct. So they took out the cooktop and all was well with the world, right? This is much more complicated. And so it requires an actual sit-down as opposed to a direct instruction. Because what would, what would the direct instruction be? It can't be provide reservoir spaces if there's no room to provide them in, you know, in sort of an obvious way. So it, it is an iterative sit-down at the table process. But tha, thank you, Kurt, and you're right. I have, we haven't heard from DOB, and we should. So, go ahead, Mr. Zoltan.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Michael Zoltan on behalf of Department of Buildings. So just to discuss a little bit, of course, I'm very happy to facilitate meetings. My understanding was, I, I kept checking in with the borough and asking whether or not there had been requests for meetings. And I had heard that there weren't. I don't know if anything got lost. I don't know what happened.
You have to be kidding me.
Yeah, so obviously, that's a source of frustration. But you can explain then your frustration on your end, and then we see a broken system, right?
My, my understanding is, at, at, at the very least, I can say that I'm, I'm happy to facilitate something. No one has ever reached out to me other than, you know, receiving BSA papers. I'm always here. We've, we've, in, in many cases, you know, the, the applicant reaches out to us mid-hearing, like the Cabana case, but other ones also to facilitate possible ways of resolving the issue aside from the BSA hearings. And, and that didn't happen here, so happy to do it.
Do we take it as it's happening now, that there's a request now for a meeting with the tech? And can you please facilitate that?
Absolutely. I'm very happy to facilitate meetings. That's, that's part of what we're here for. So we will step in, we will just reach out and we'll, we'll try to facilitate meetings to try to resolve this in, in, in some certain manner. I had hoped that's what would have happened between hearing one and hearing two. And I know that was the plan, and I expected there would be a reach out. Obviously, that didn't happen in the matter that was expected and directed by, or suggested by the board. But we, we will facilitate it happening between two ends. Hopefully, that will be the last hearing. But on to the, the merits, if I may.
Yes, but before, before we just talk about that, I kind of want to make, clarify that, like, the deal, the terms of this arrangement, okay? The fact that, you know, I would hope that applicant, appellate's counsel would have reached out directly to you and said, you know, the architect is going crazy and has not been able to. So I, it sounds like there was a breakdown in communication among all the levels. So Mr. Diaranzo, you need to make sure that you're in constant contact with your counsel. So with your client's counsel, Mr. Noriega, and your client, right? In case you weren't.
I was, but just filed the PR11, which is what architects do, to speak with someone.
I know. Yeah, I know you follow the rules. We're going to do a different thing. We're going to try to do different rules. So the rules are that you have to take full advantage of your client's lawyer and constantly, constantly say, I need a meeting, I need a meeting. Mr. Noriega, you have to take constant advantage of Mr. Zoltan's offer to facilitate. I need a meeting, I need a meeting. And then you need to let us know that the meetings are occurring. If they're not occurring, that's where we, we do our intervention, right? But we, we respect Mr. Zoltan. We worked with him for a long time on these cases. And so we expect that he will be able to succeed in arranging these meetings. But if the meetings turn out to be, you have 10 minutes, that's not going to work. They need to be meetings of substance and regularly scheduled. I'm suggesting a week, that, you know, every week, that there's a follow-up meeting so that we can really make progress by the time we hear this again. And I don't want to hear this again in the distant future, and I don't want to hear any adjournments, right? So, because that's the other thing. We adjourned it for the last hearing. So I, I want to really be able to move this through. So now, I'm sorry, Mr. Zoltan, go ahead on the matter.
Understood. Okay, so first to talk about some of the zoning issues. So 3601 discusses the goals and purposes of the off-site parking regulations. It explains the lens in which the provisions need to be reviewed. Specifically, it states that traffic should be reduced on the streets and that public safety and general welfare should be promoted and protected. The proposal simply does not achieve those goals. It provides no proper space for cars to queue for the elevator other than the street itself. Allowing cars to queue in the street clearly goes against the entire goal of permitting and requiring off-street parking.
Sorry, I, I need to interrupt you there because in fact, the cars are queuing some inside the building. The issue is something else that maybe they're queuing further onto the street. But it's not at all like the original proposal, original, original proposal, where the cars went directly to the street, right?
Right, so.
I hope referring to the, the newest set of drawings that were submitted, okay?
Well, at, at this point, I'm, I'm referring to the originals because that is the basis of the case.
No, 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 but please don't comp, so I don't want to add insult to injury here. The architect has changed the drawings. DOB actually said, you actually asked for an adjournment because you hadn't reviewed the last set of drawings. And so I, the assumption was that your response would be to the last set of drawings. So I'd appreciate if you not talk about the first. That, that's not getting us anywhere. Let's talk about, if you know, you may not know what the object, the specific objections are to the last set. We are interpreting the obje, we're just sort of guessing based on our own reviews what the objections might be. But we don't actually know from DOB what the objections are.
Sure. So in, in DOB's last submission, we did discuss the, the, the second set of plans that would have, that were submitted between hearing one and hearing two. And as noted, there are now reservoir spaces inside the building. There are six labeled. The, the last, first, for starters, the last two, it's unclear if they're fully within the building or partially leaking outside of the building. So you have some of it leaking outside. Secondly, while there are now some reservoir spaces, it, the issues are still the same. So you have six on paper, but realistically, trying to imagine them in use. It's, it's not really six, it's more like three. So you have two elevators, and then you have three in front of each, each elevator. So if one el, if, if there's a car coming out of an elevator, you obviously can't use those three reservoir spaces because, you know, they're, they're, they'd be blocking the car coming out of the elevator or going into the elevator. So although it's six on paper, realistically, you're not getting anything more than three. And maybe you have three and one dormant elevator. It, 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 it's, it's, it's a path in the right direction, but you're not there yet. And that's the main concern. This was laid out in, in department's submission. But understood that, that there was no follow-up meeting with the applicant. And, you know, we'll, we'll be working on that going forward. So that is the, the actual issue. I see you have a question.
That's Commissioner Sheta, or.
I, I do have a comment. I, I appreciate you said you're in the right direction, but you're not there yet. I believe the issue here is they need to know what is there. Somebody has to specify what is there. I, 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 I understand that DOB has the authority by, like, many chances to ask for something beyond the minimum requirements in, in, in all the codes and provisions, like the building code, the ER, even in, in the building code. It, it did, does mention at the very beginning of the code that the requirements of this code are the minimum required. Same thing for, I just checked the zoning resolution, and it does seem the same thing. But if, if, let's say if I'm designing a concrete structure and I'm using 6,000 PSI, and I went to the commissioner, and he looked at my drawings, and he said, you know what? Although your numbers do seem to jive and, and make it happen, but I believe you need to use higher concrete strength. Him, how higher? And he keeps telling me just higher, I'm going to be upset and frustrated. We need to know what is there. They are in the right direction, that's fine, that's good. We, we approach, we're, we're converging here, using the structural and analysis language. We're converging. But we need to know how far we are from each other. So please, let's, let's get, let's get an answer to that.
Understood. At, at this point, I can't give you that answer in terms of where there is. And that's why the next step would be further meetings. At this point, I can.
I'm not asking for, I'm not asking for an answer right now. I'm sorry for interrupting you. I'm not, I'm not asking you to answer this. I know probably you're not the one who's going to answer. But during the coordination effort that you appreciate me going to, going to put in, please, let's make this the goal, to get to an answer, so we can, we can move forward.
Okay.
I just want to add that, short of doing so, you know, short of providing the appropriate guidance, this, you know, especially when it's, when you're, when you're citing safety concerns. The, the testimonies of, of the architect suggested some sort of moving target. Short of providing a reasonable, reasonable guidance, the actions can be deemed arbitrary. You can't just say, this isn't safe, this isn't safe. You need to provide, there needs to be something more fundamental. And honestly, I, I, Council, I, 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 I always appreciate your, your thoughtful responses and, and your, your dedication to sound legal arguments. I think this is much more a question of fact. And I think that we'd all be best suited if, if those, that issue could be addressed. Rather than, I, I agree with you on the law. You know, I, it's the facts here that, that are concerning.
Okay. And, and I would suggest, Mr. Zoltan, in the interest of time, because it's 10 to 12, you heard the statements from the commissioners. The, they all appear to agree essentially that the DOB has the authority to be concerned about safety and ask for the project to meet its, its experienced concern for safety. So you don't really need to be arguing your position anymore. I think that now what's happened is the, the, the board members are very sympathetic with the plight of the architect, which is actually, I think, what is it? It's called the stomach of the architect, the belly of the architect. It's, it's that, uh, but now what we've heard is a real-life situation where a project can't move forward because of processing issues. And so here we are, not in the, in the business of managing DOB processing, but sometimes we, we intervene like that. So I think the best solution is that we, we move forward on this idea that you will facilitate. So we're, we're sort of making you like the project manager for this case where to make sure that the architect has regular meetings with a person at Technical Affairs who is in a. who is in a high position of authority, so can actually make decisions and is knowledgeable about the subject of parking garages. And I'd also don't know what Mr. D'Oranzo's resp- uh, experiences with parking garages per se. That was a comment I had earlier. We we see testimony very often from two consultants in particular who are parking garage specialists. It's kind of like what they, that's all they do. And so, and they don't represent a particular company because that's always a little fraught, right? They are consultant, they're engineers. And I don't know if that would help, but it seems to me that perhaps your client, including them in consultations, might speed up this process. You may have a ton of experience with parking garages, so I I actually don't know. But that's, I'm just throwing that out. That's kind of what I would want to do in your place, but I don't have a ton of experience designing parking garages. So.
Well, we actually had an operator, we had a a written letter from the operator regarding these specific elevators and their speed. It's very similar to what you mentioned before in terms of the Japanese system. But we're open to everything. As I said, you know, the legal arguments for us were always a a side note, because I always saw this as a long shot in in many different respects. And that's why we went to the the drawing board looking for solutions. And I very much appreciate, as I said at the beginning, the BSA has offered far more than the DOB ever did in four years. In terms of just design solutions, design advice, common sense arguments. And so I am very appreciative of of the, of this new course and we'll take full advantage.
Okay, okay. So so what I'm gonna ask you is, since we're setting up a schedule like this with DOB, you're gonna have your first meeting. I really hope this works. You're gonna have your first meeting next week, right, Mr. Zoltan?
I I I I can try.
I know.
I I can't guarantee other people's schedules offhand.
Right, I know. So we're gonna encourage some, kind of from our end, some kind of aggressive. Maybe what you could do is let us know who the right person at tech affairs would be. And that way we can push from our side too. But so let's just say optimistically, your first appointment was next week. So, and I'm looking at sort of this week by week, so maybe like five weeks, six weeks to go back and forth and back and forth. Does that sound reasonable?
It sounds fantastic to me.
Mr. Zoltan?
I mean, I I I understand. I I, again, this is the first I'm I'm hearing that. I understand the idea makes sense. I I would have to speak and find out who who uh, who would be conducting the meetings to to, before guaranteeing their schedules.
Yeah, sure. I know you can't guarantee the schedules, but here's what we're not gonna do. We're not gonna do something which is the equivalent of the architect that goes online and fills out a form and asks for an appointment and they get one six weeks.
Understood. I'm, that that, I'm I'm happy to be the middle, I'm happy to be the middle person here to facilitate it as as and and not have to go through the regular.
You're talking about higher up tech affairs, correct?
Yes. I think it's more efficient if it's tech affairs.
100%.
They're the, they're the decider group. So.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna put this on for continuation in like, say, six to eight weeks. And I, we're going to reach out immediately to DOB from our side also. So, Mr. Zoltan, if you would do that, and then as everyone under instruction, so Mr. D'Oranzo, you're gonna contact Mr. Noriega all the time. Did you, did you, did you? And Mr. Noriega, you're gonna do the same with Mr. Zoltan. Did you, did you, did you? Until, you know, that scratching on the blackboard annoying thing, you're gonna be that, okay? All of you, all three of you are gonna be annoying blackboard scratchers, okay? All right. So I thank you very much. I I'm I'm sorry that this is what the story is. Oh, yes, Kurt, you have your hand up. Oh, we didn't go to the.
Oh, well, yes, the public, but also in terms of submissions, what, if anything, do we expect to see? Would we expect to see all correspondence between DOB and the appellant?
I don't think we, what we need to see is the happy letter that says we're withdrawing the case. The happy letter, like we saw with what you mentioned, the the.
Wouldn't we want something that says, like, the meeting is happening? I know Mike, right? Now that Mike is gonna, Mrs. Zoltan is gonna contact, I guess he'll contact Kurt and I or whatever.
Right, so I. Yeah, so I would like to hear that the meetings are happening regularly. But rather than submissions, that should be constant updates, right?
But if 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 this happy, if this happy moment doesn't come, we we need to to like know what happened between now.
Yes.
And that sad moment when they come back and say we didn't agree on something. Because honestly, I'm not saying that I'm gonna be withdrawing my recognition that DOB can decide beyond the requirements of the zoning regulations or a building code or any of these provisions. But if if it comes to, he said, we said. And then there is disagreement. I I believe we have to like make our mind, remake our minds, I would say.
Right.
Based on communications from now until they come back, whether it's a, it's a happy moment or the other way. And hopefully it's the happy moment.
Okay, so how about this? How about we have some regular contact with our counsel from Mr. Noriega about how we're doing on getting the meetings? And that at the end of the six to eight week period, we get the submission of the solution, right? And and ideally, it would be a DOB's letter that says, essentially, good to go. That's that's what we're looking for, right?
Okay.
If DOB has an objection to the drawings, that that's what we're looking for. Let's see how we, and otherwise, I don't, I really don't want to even offer this as an option where DOB sends in, well, we're not, we're still not there on the drawing. So I have a lot of faith in Mr. D'Oranzo to work with the system. This is the ultimate system, to come up with a solution that's satisfactory, okay? So, and Mr. Noriega, I also would request that, this is another thing. Each week where Mr. D'Oranzo has to modify his drawings, please send the drawings to Mr. Noriega and you're going to check, or your office will check, whoever's in your office who does this, that the proposal complies with zoning and code, to the extent you have anybody in house who does code. If if you don't have anyone who does code, then Mr. D'Oranzo, you need to have a code expert look. But, uh, Mr. Noriega, you should be looking at whether it's complying with zoning because some solutions might blow up the whole alternate setback solution or something like that. In which case, now we're looking at a different zoning analysis of the building, which may be allowed. So maybe a slight modification. I know you're sort of doing a a stepping cake, the hair song from your own thing. Sorry.
I think that is a comment.
I notice that we we can definitely review those things, but I I think the biggest issue was the, like Commissioner Seda said, is is this moving target of what is our requirement as far as reservoir spaces? And yes, it may trigger other things like screening or whatever, but we need to know what our target is so that we can modify the drawings around that.
But I I would ask you to please not stand, in this case, so much on the law. Let's stand on the solution, right? Don't, don't come back with, you only told me to do this. Instead, you're trying to come up with a solution to a project. So don't put, I really beg you, please don't push back with legal briefs and all that stuff. It doesn't make projects get built.
No, I believe the client just wants to get this built, which.
Yes. So let's, let's, let's keep that in mind and and not say, uh, you're moving target. No, because now you made them, you made a modification, it brought up another issue, and you're gonna try to catch the issue before it goes back to DOB so that they don't say, oh, but now it doesn't comply with egress or something like that.
Understood. But I think the bigger issue is, in this case, is six enough? Is it enough?
No, 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 it isn't. No, don't misunderstand. DOB's concern is safety. Get your, get your head away from the word reservoir spaces. It isn't about reservoir spaces. It's about how fast do the cars get down? How fast do they get off the side, off the street? And how do they get out? And if you could solve that whole thing with some fantastic throughput mechanism, something or other, they might have a different viewpoint. But if you're not giving them that information, wow, it's an amazing elevator, it processes in two seconds and all of that, and it takes it down and up in three seconds. That might be the solution, because in Japan, that's exactly what they have. They have these little turntables, the car goes in and it vanishes automatically. You don't even know it was there, like, 10 seconds later. There's not a pileup on the street. So don't focus on the word reservoir space. That's part of your downfall. Those, the, the focus needs to be on safety and the solution and maneuverability inside the garage to get cars down there as fast as possible. That's what, that's really what they're talking about.
I just like that. As long as DOB's, is their requests are reasonable, uh, that that's gonna be enough for me, uh, to 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 go on the side of DOB. So I'm hoping that they give you a reasonable request, so you guys can come to an, uh, to come to an agreement and I don't, and we don't have to hear this case. But if they provide you with a reasonable request and you're like, well, I don't know, I think six is enough, and the board finds them to be reasonable, that would, wouldn't be in the benefit of your client. I really think this is something to to, I think that, uh, working with them as opposed to, uh, it, I think working with them and hopefully in both parties will act in good faith and we can get a solution here.
Right. Chase, yeah, your hand up. Go ahead, Chase, fine.
No, that was a mistake. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Any last minute comments? Because we're gonna move on, or we're gonna, we're gonna move to the public, right? Thank you.
So this case is 2019, 198, 40-17, 20 East Avenue, Queens. So if you want to call in, 646-558-8656. Zoom webinar ID number is 910-8023-4083. And the passcode is 438608. If you're in the Zoom room already, please press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute if you've called in.
Okay.
Um, we have someone who raised his hand.
Oh, really? Wow. All right.
Mr. Diff.
Is the owner? Hello, Mr. Diffonceca. What, what case are you calling about?
I'm in reference to the Jovan Stewart Lane, but I'm actually waiting for the, it is Neil Weisberg, which is the, I'm the.
You're not, sorry, we're still in another hearing. We're gonna send you back to the waiting room and we'll recognize you in a little while, okay? Sorry. Thank you. Okay, so we have our marching orders. Everyone needs to stay in touch with us, please, about what's going on. And I invite also Mr. D'Oranzo to please, if you don't have, let's say, if you're not able to, if you need further assistance to reach out to us directly.
Will do. Appreciate that very much.
Okay. So you know how to do that, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. All right. So thank you, everyone. Very much appreciate all of your energy and time and hope we can fix this.
Thank you all. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, it's 12 o'clock, 12:04. I'd like to take a 10-minute break, so we'll come back at 12:15, okay? Everyone could come back, please.
We're going in order still?
Um, yeah, we're, well, yeah. I think the other, I, I think the other cases are short. No?
All right. No, because you know with Jason.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know, but I think they're short and what he's talking about is the two o'clock break that we normally take if we run into two.
Okay.
I think we have everybody. Everyone's here. We can proceed.
Are we live? Yeah, we're live.
Yes.
Okay, we're back on the record. This is the public hearing for February 23rd, 2021, 10 a.m. session. The next item to be discussed is item number 26, 2019-276A, 15 Stewart Lane, Queens.
Hi, good afternoon, Neil Weisberg.
Hi.
And I'm here with Carlos DeFonceca, who you spoke to earlier.
Yes, hold on.
Okay.
We don't need to be sworn in on this.
No, this is an A case. Yeah.
I, good afternoon, everyone. Neil Weisberg on behalf of Bill LaCamples, the owner of the single family home at 15, home at 15 Stewart Lane, seeking a minor enlargement in the bed of a map street and which does not front on a map street. We appreciate working with the fire department. Inspector Daley has been extremely helpful and we, we received a letter of no objection. I know that there was a comment that about the no standing signs and maybe Inspector Daley can speak to this, but my understanding was that DOT was going to be providing those. If not, it's not a big deal and we can do that. But that was my understanding and I just want to make sure that's accurate.
Okay, but they need to be shown on the drawings. Otherwise, they, it's like they never happened. Right?
I don't know. It's a concern from the, from Mr. Weisberg that DOT may want to change the position of them.
Well, that they were going to take the lead on installing the signs, not us.
No, but they still have to be shown.
You have to show them. We always have that. You know, we have a curb cut. DOT might not approve the curb cut or we have, you know, the, in schools, we have those no standing zones. DOT might not agree to the no standing zone. You still show it on the drawings. And then if it doesn't happen, you say DOT didn't want to do it.
No problem. Okay, so we will add that to the plans. We will also have the survey updated to clearly show the meets and bounds of the easement and reference the easement. I know the board wanted an update on DEP. We are waiting on a site connection proposal to under, to explain to DEP how the sanitary will work and the snow has put this back, delayed us, but we're hoping to have that done as soon as possible because they have to run probes. So Mr. DeFonceca believes it, it may be able to be done by next week and then we'll coordinate with DEP as soon as possible. I am not sure what's outstanding with DOT. Maybe Ms. Matias can tell me.
No, I, I reached out to them. They, they said they, they weren't able to give me any submission today. I did forward them the, uh, the fire department's letter so to make sure that they're all coordinated. So, um, I don't have a turnaround date. I'm sorry. They said as soon as possible.
Okay, so once we get the site connection proposal done, we will sit down again with DEP and have resolve any issues they may have. And then I'll continue to work with Ms. Matias with DOT if they want anything. And I believe that's all that's waiting.
Right, so I did have a question. I, I'd like to go directly to Chief Daley because I had a question about the maintenance of Stewart Lane beyond this building.
And good afternoon, Madam Chair. Uh, we have been in contact with the DOT and they are quite, quite aware of the condition of the, of Stewart Lane. Also the, the missing street sign, uh, because the administrative company had trouble finding Stewart Lane. So it's funny, but um, I, we've, I told them, you know, that there is no HOA, uh, that the street is being poorly maintained and that they need to take some enforcement action because our apparatus traveling down that road is gonna destroy the road or oh, God forbid, uh, collapse, uh, the road. So right now, you know, again, we're waiting on DOT. Supposedly they're gonna do, take some enforcement action of all the lots that front on Stewart Lane and of course, um, do a history search of who is responsible now for maintaining Stewart Lane. So, you know, based on that, you know, captain, speaking with Captain Malloy in, uh, in operations, you know, is we now we granted the, uh, our letter of no objection, uh, for the homeowner. He, he had agreed to pave in front of his, uh, street and he's also, uh, providing sprinklers, which we are more happy and appreciator of that, appreciative of that. Uh, but of course, you know, this is a, a street that, uh, people ignored for many years. And now, um, lawyers are from DOT supposedly like being involved in this. All that to say.
So how many houses are relying on Stewart Lane?
Uh, possibly eight.
Oh, wow. So and there is no history, Mr. Weisberg, did you research anything? There is no
I know, yes, I know everything about. So it's, it's a privately owned lot by a gentleman named Charles Delazio. Our, the applicant in the past has reached out to him about this. And the applicant has also tried to organize with the other homes fronting on the street to get Mr. Delazio to act. My firm actually sent him a letter telling him that because we weren't sure whether FDNY would issue a letter of no objection, that we were gonna have to take legal action if, if he didn't pursue repairing this. And then through Inspector Daley, DOT is gonna work on this. So we call the dogs off on that. But it is a single owner of the lot. The easement says that he shall maintain it for highway purposes. I don't know how a court would interpret that and I'm hoping it doesn't get to that point. But obviously when we hear that, we, we believe it should be maintained as a highway would be maintained and that is Delazio's responsibility.
So it really does sound like you're gonna end up having to enforce it in court, the easement.
Or we're, we're hoping DOT will send violations and be handled that way, but if not, I, I, we'll have to talk about next steps.
Wow. This is weird. So then the portion that's in front of the subject property, is that also owned by Mr. Del- um, Delazio? Oh.
Yes. So, but that's what we agreed at the minimum that we could pave that portion, at least to improve that portion, even though it's not our responsibility, but we will do that.
So would you be willing? I mean, this is quite weird, right? So Mr. Delazio owns it and has the obligation to maintain it and isn't maintaining it in the future. Um, in front of the subject site, when the asphalt starts to wear and so on, who's, who's going to fix it?
I can't answer that. I, I would say Mr. Delazio, but if, if that's boards can, part of their condition of the resolution that we maintain it, then that's something that I know Mr. LaCamples would agree to.
So I think that would be the hmm, they, it's weird. So in the event, you know, that's the thing is there's an easement in place, but if, and this is the way, let's say DOT works on sidewalks. The private property owner is responsible for the sidewalk, right? But if they don't maintain it, then DOT steps in, maintains it and sends you the bill. So, right? So maybe we have to have some sort of situation like this because we can't say it's his responsibility and nobody takes care of it, right? And future comers have to also be aware that there is this strange situation. No? So that we say that the, the owner who, the recipient of this GCL 36 waiver.
35 waiver.
All right. What'd you say, Tony?
35 waiver.
All right, well, 35 and 36. The 36 is the problem. It's not the 35, right? So that this recipient has to, um, be active in getting the frontage, the roadway in front repaired by the, um, by the rightful owner of that property or in the event of their failure to do so, the owner of this site has to take care of it.
What about underground? What about the sewer thing?
What do you mean? What's, what about the sewer? No, I'm just talking about the maintenance of the
I know that the applicant would agree to maintaining the portion in front of, of their home. They're willing to pave it and they would be willing to maintain it.
Okay, so, um, I'm wondering if since we have time, because we have to wait, can you draft an, a restrictive declaration to that effect? Which makes really clear, you could copy a cup, include a copy of the E of the ease of the easement. Easement chip of the lot is known, known on that restrictive deck. Ownership of the roadway is known so that at least the whoever the new, the property owner in the future is of this subject lot knows who to talk to, kind of, right? But in the event of failure of that owner to take action, then this owner would take action.
That make sense? That make sense?
Okay.
Let me just ask, let me just make a how much time he thinks we need for to get through the entire site connection proposal. Carlos?
Well, I think there are, there are two companies. We have Citywide, which is going to tour the existing septic tanks. And we have Newport Engineering working on them. I, I would say probably like a month.
So a month for us and then we need to coordinate with DEP. So can we try to shoot for a two month?
I, I think so, yeah.
I'm talking to the chair.
Um, but you're saying eight weeks to submit?
Well, have our hearing in eight weeks because I know that if we, if this is approved, that they want to begin construction as soon as possible.
Okay. Is that realistic in terms of response time from DEP and DOT and all that stuff?
Well, DEP has been very responsive when we were dealing with their initial objection.
I don't know about DOT, maybe another
Okay, maybe eight weeks to submit.
It, it's always safer. Okay. All right. So let's go to the public then.
Hey, the application we are discussing is 2019-276A, 15 Stewart Lane. If you want to call in, it is 646-558-8656. Zoom webinar ID number is 910-8023-4083. Passcode is 438608. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand. You're on the phone. You can raise your hand by star nine and press star six if you want to speak.
Messy. This is really the story of old time, you know, old time ownerships of land and bizarre subdivisions. Okay.
In the interim, I would like to work with your council's office on the restrictive declaration too, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, oh, right. With respect to that, don't need the eight weeks to submit. As soon as you do a draft, they'll review and you'll do some back and forth.
Yes.
Thank you. Great. All right, then. So, good. All right. Thank you. Um,
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Hey, next item is item number 27, 2020-24A, 393527, Street, Queens.
When you can hear us. We can't hear you, Ms. Lansman. I think your speaker may be down.
No.
Turn up your speaker. Maybe unplug your headset. It may be blocked. Yeah, you did. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Good afternoon, Adam Scherin. So we attended the review session and
Sit a little closer to your mic.
Okay, can you hear? Okay, we attended the review session and we heard the comments. Okay, we attended the review session and we heard the comments. First, when we first submitted this, we we gave in a list of expenditures that the project manager from the site had provided for us. However, we we heard the comments and we're happy to provide an A requisition to make things easier to show the findings. And then, and as you had all mentioned, the the project was done and we're hoping to get get this closed as soon as possible.
Okay. So you actually do have those AIA requisitions?
We will get them. No, we will be, our project manager will assist us in providing those. She doesn't have.
Okay, so they're not supposed to be like created for this this purpose. Normally, it's something that's actually submitted by the general contractor to the client. You know, I did this much work, this much work is left. This is what I did. You owe me this, right? And then the architect signs it to verify, to confirm that that's actually what they observed on the site. And then the owner arguably pays the bill, right? So don't create it out of whole cloth, kind of, now. That's that would be after the fact. It doesn't serve any purpose, right? So other kinds of proof of payment, such as checks or ledger sheet, something, they must be keeping records of all the money that's expended in the $80 million, right? So whatever kind of ledger records, if they don't have a requisition, but that's a standard form that kind of typical construction sites use.
Okay, perfect. We will provide that.
Okay, and Commissioner Hartley Brown, since we do have a submission, would you like them to submit a a clear, serious law statement? Unmute yourself. Muted.
Yes, that would be good. Um, building on what I said, create this matrix. And the deputy director could send you a copy of what it looks like that basically says what you could have built under the previous zoning and what you're restricted to building now under the new zoning. And then show the reduction in what you're allowed to build and make that a part of your serious law statement. Then go to what you've already built and figure out what it would cost to out of the finished project, create a complying with the new zoning project. And add that into your narrative.
Okay, so I will reach out to Tony for that, for that information. We'll provide that at a later date.
So, you know, in this, in this case, it it might be a full demolition, in which case, wow. Or it might be that you have to shear off a portion of the building or the top of the building or something like that, which is another version of wow, but there's different costs associated with it. And yeah, so then those are, of course, cost estimates because you know how much money went into the project. So okay, but may, and Tony, in the meantime, could find that matrix that maybe you could just send to her, right? Okay.
Yeah, and I'll check with Commissioner Hartley Brown on it. That's the same thing we're looking at.
Exactly. Okay. Um, okay, cool. All right, then. So let's go to the public. I don't think there are any other questions.
2020 24 A 39 35 27 Street Queens. If you want to call in, it's 646 558 8656. The Zoom webinar ID number is 910-80234083. Passcode is 438608. And if you're in the Zoom room, please raise your hand. If you called in, star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute.
So, Ms. Landsman, how much time do you think you need?
I want to say two weeks to get the get the findings in order and get the expenditures. Would we be able to put this on the on the decision calendar as most of it?
Yeah. So that's what we'll do. We're gonna close this, but you're going to submit that material, okay? Because just to clarify, the commissioners have stated that we believe you've met the findings, but we want to clean up the the record. The written rec. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so you you said two weeks. I'll give you three. Okay, and it might be actually a little bit more because I don't know what our hearing schedule will allow. But but now I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter? Chair Promoter? Oh, am I muted? I, yeah. Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashada?
Aye.
Commissioner Shibeta?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice day.
New cases zoning calendar, item number 28 2020 62 BZ 90 West 225th Street Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Frank St. Jacques from Ackerman LLP for the applicant.
Are you by yourself? Someone else?
I am by myself.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Thank you. Again, Frank St. Jacques, Ackerman LLP for the applicant. Good afternoon, Madam Chair Commissioners. We listened to the comments at this morning's review session. I've been in touch with the architect and will work with him to provide a full plan set showing details on how the space was constructed to attenuate sound and vibration from the PCE. This, you know, we, I think, should take about two to three weeks to submit.
Okay, so just to make sure to be clear, it should, the acoustical details need to be keyed to the drawing so we know exactly where the acoustical effort was made, okay? Not just a set of details attached, okay?
Sure, I I understood. I should have clarified. Yes, we we will do that.
Okay, great. I don't think there were any other issues. No. Any comments from commissioners before we go to the public? No? Okay, let's go to the public.
This application is 2020 62 BZ 90 West 225th Street Manhattan. This is legalization of a PCE. Own number is 646 558 8656. Zoom webinar ID number is 910-80234083. The passcode is 438608. If you wish to call in. Excuse me? Oh, that's me, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Buzzing, sorry.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Why keep me?
Okay, so if anyone is interested in speaking on this, we have some attendees in the waiting room. If you're calling in for this case, then please raise your Zoom hand.
Okay, all right. 90 West 220 seconds, 25th Street.
A gym, right?
Gym.
Right, yeah, okay. So I think we're good. Nobody raised their hand. So, and I noted you need three weeks to submit. So I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter? Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashada?
Aye.
Commissioner Shibeta?
Aye.
Okay, this is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item number 29 2018 173 BZ 128 Beach 9th Street Queens.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant.
Okay, I'm just gonna sway you, and I know what you're gonna say, but I just want to sway you.
But I have a couple, just the the members of my team are here. So I don't know if you want to swear them also. But it should be, you know, I don't I don't think any of them will have to testify today.
Okay, but raise your hands anyway. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond to board member questions?
I do.
Honestly, the board member question, sorry.
I do that as well. Good morning, afternoon, everybody. I listened to the review session and the a number of questions that require more detailed explanation or analysis than can be accomplished on a Zoom hearing today, especially on a first hearing. So therefore, I propose to address the board's concerns in writing with an emphasis on the uniqueness finding, differentiating between our case and the Beach Fifth case, as well as going into detail regarding the hardship created by the DEC regulations and the efforts that have been made on our part with DEC to alleviate some of the, some of the hardship on on that that's imposed on us and how it's gotten us to the point where we are today. So I can do all of that in writing. I think that's the, probably the easiest and most efficient way to handle this.
Agreed, but I just want to underscore the statements from Commissioner Ashada. You should probably not be pursuing subsurface conditions.
No, that was, I agree, those were done kind of secondary to the main issue, the main issue being the DEC restrictions that that will, that burden our property uniquely.
Okay, so at this point, though, you know, I'm I am concerned that the application may be premature or most. So on Staten Island, we see many cases, usually they're for GCL 36 waivers. But we see many cases where the DEC has already more than weighed in. There's a, there are a set of plans where the DEC says this is the area in which you're allowed to develop. And it's a, it's a set of, it's a set of drawings where DEC has designated the adjacent area and says what's allowed to happen and so on. We don't have any of that. And if it's DEC regulations that are restricting development, we need to hear from the DEC that you've reached out and they've agreed to or not agreed to waive whatever the restrictions are and so on, because otherwise we're really flying blind. We're just, you know.
So we had the initial conversation.
No, 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 but
It's choppy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I should, is it choppy?
I didn't mean to interrupt. It's just, you know, it's choppy. So I didn't mean to interrupt, but I I just wanted to, I understand the point. We've had the conversations where we got to a point of the the limitations were 20% lot coverage. We've gotten to a point where they've agreed to, or in theory, agreed to the variance of a 25% lot coverage. Instead, I can back that up and we'll revisit the, we'll we'll re start the DEC process so that we can bring it to BSA and show them the discussions and have DEC weigh in.
Okay, so just the sort of general statement that says 25% doesn't help us because we're used to seeing DEC drawings where where there's a D, where there's a statement that says this is the area of non-development, this is the area where you're allowed to pave or something, whatever, right? And this is the area of development, and it's very clear on the drawings, and there's a DEC sign off on that. And at the moment, not having that and just saying 20, 25%, doesn't get us anywhere at all. And of course, as you know, we have no authority to waive any DEC requirements, nor should we, because it's to protect the environment. And so we must have those parameters before we can, we can proceed with any further discussion, okay?
Okay. Understood.
Okay. So, so that means probably a lot of time is needed.
I have to get back.
With, with regard to the subsurface, you're mentioning that they are kind of second. Do you mean that they're gonna stay in the argument or?
I'll review it based on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, the architect was on and listening. I'm gonna show your comments to the engineer as well. And then we'll address it in the financials accordingly. But based on the conversation I heard this morning, it should be removed as an extreme hardship.
Yes.
I would say if if that subsurface argument is gonna go away, and hopefully it's gonna go away because your side actually is favored, it's not burdened by the subsurface, I would say the construction cost should should be based on something like standardized, like the Marshall and Swift. Instead of like, you know, doing a very detailed construction cost estimate, just take a price per square foot.
So I think that's what Commissioner Hartley Brown was was suggesting as well. So it's something that Barbara Co, Barbara Cohn and our construction estimate, cost estimator is on the was on the review session, I believe they're on the hearing, and they'll adjust accordingly.
Okay, okay.
Okay, good.
Good. Um, I guess that's, let's go to the public.
Sure, the application that we're speaking of is 2018 173 BZ 128 Beach 9th Street Queens. The call in number is 646 558 8656. The Zoom webinar ID number is 910-80234083. And the passcode is 438608, should you wish to call in. If you're already in the Zoom room, please raise your hand. If you've called in, star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute.
So just to continue until, see if we see anyone calling in. The the fact that this is waterfront, subject to waterfront access requirements, this also really needs to go to city planning for their review. We cannot review your compliance with waterfront regulations. So you should be in touch with them for
Plans, John, John Young reached out to me last week. I sent him the plans and the application materials. And I have not heard comments from them. I I told, John Young and I have a very good relationship, and I'm happy to work with them if there are issues or concerns on that end.
Okay, so it's more than if there are issues. We don't know anything about whether to what extent the waterfront area complies with the regulations. So it can't just be waiting to hear back if there's any problems. You have to actively reach out to city planning and have them review your proposal for consistency with the waterfront access requirements. So we both have WRP review under Seeker, but we also have the zoning requirements and justice. And also, you need to reach out to DOB to get a CCD one and a ZR D one, or actually, plan review, actually, it's plan review to show compliance with Appendix G because it's, again, we have no on that. So you you need all of those things before we can continue to review the materials, okay? Okay, so that tells me, any other comments from commissioners or anybody else about the All right, so that tells me that you're gonna need a few months for this. So.
Sorry, there's a dog in the office. Oh, man. Molly.
Ollie.
Not my dog, but there is a dog in the adjoining office, so.
Maybe like four months, that seems.
Okay, I I'm hopeful that the DEC stuff will will be able to be started up again rather quickly. So hopefully, it'll, the four months will be fine.
Okay, so that's just DEC, but city planning, DOB, so.
Yeah, I'm concerned that DEC would have been the longest out of all those, out of all the rest.
Okay, well, great. All right, so I'm I'm writing four months to submit, and we'll let you know when hearing date is, okay? All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this concludes the morning session of the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February 23, 2021. We will resume at, I'm assuming, 2:00 PM. Thank you.